Okay, I'd like to go ahead and reconvene the regular Board of Education meeting. This is Monday, October 13th. Several members of our board did meet in a closed session to discuss some legal issues with our school attorney, so we are reconvening. I will start off our meeting tonight with a public hearing for the 2015-2016 school year calendar and waiver request. Laurel, at this time, I ask if you've received anything, either email or written communication?
The email and communication I had received was previously forwarded. We received nothing new.
Okay, thank you. Now is the time for the public to address our board regarding this topic.
Lawrence Winklowski, 4234 Merrell Road, Northeast. Since I have to speak before any new information is presented regarding the calendar, I unfortunately have to make some assumptions with my comments instead of basing them all on fact. With the presented calendar, I have the following minor concerns. A few weeks ago, Mrs. Johnson made a comment that everyone needs to make sacrifices, so with the Friday staff learning days, that what policies are in place to make sure that staff don't take vacation days and sick days to get extended weekends, especially with the September 4th and March 25th Fridays. January 18th should not be a holiday, so some administrators, staff, and a few students can attend a luncheon. There's no good reason for this day to be a holiday. January 18th should be a district's Day of Service. To make the proposed calendar friendlier to local businesses and parents, the proposed use of January 29th, February 10th, and February 26th should all be moved one week later. This district made an effort to find out the concerns the community had with the calendar, sent in information to a committee to generate guidelines for the calendar committee, and at last meeting, Dr. Pickering made sure the logic behind the proposed calendar was explained. The last step of this process was to engage the community to obtain feedback on how they felt about the proposed calendar, and the district failed at this. The district had numerous ways to communicate with the community requesting feedback on the proposed calendar. The district used the bare minimum by placing a link in a story about the proposed calendar on a district website. An engaged CR, favorite fall activities was more important than the school calendar. The district didn't use School Messenger, Power School, Facebook, or Canvas. None of the school websites talked about the proposed calendar, and a virtual backpack, which is probably the most appropriate place to put this information, has nothing about the proposed calendar, but did address the state of the district meeting. I only have to live with this calendar for three more years, and for the most part, the calendar has little to no impact on my family life. But I thought one of the reasons we went through this process was because the negative impact the calendar had on families, especially families with less economic means, families who live on the other side of town who cannot attend board meetings. The opinions of these families do count. There is no excuse for the lack of effort with communications. So, when you have a discussion on the calendar, are you going to take the usual approach and ignore discussion about concerns raised and just vote for the calendar? Because at the last meeting, it was made, it was clearly stated, "I cannot vote against my fellow board members." Or are you going to represent the community and make sure everyone has an opportunity to provide feedback and finish the process next meeting? Thank you.
Any others wish to address the board regarding this issue? Seeing none, I will close that public hearing. And Dave, I'll turn that over to you for a recommendation.
Certainly. Our recommendation is to approve the 15-16 calendar as published.
Any discussion or questions? John?
I'm an active parent in schools, and a number of parents have publicly came up to me and talked to me as a board member that they really appreciate that their voices have been heard, so numerous people have done that. Myself as a parent, my wife as parents, and the district appreciate that we've been listening. I'm not quite sure about the concern with the Martin Luther King Day, which I think Larry was referring to, so we've seen in Iowa City and other communities some of the differing opinions on that, and I feel personally that we're doing the right thing with it. And I also know as a parent that I've received numerous emails from Washington High School, and I've seen it on our district's Facebook page and other means to give feedback to the administration, so I would disagree that we haven't been communicated with. So that's my perspective, and I do appreciate the administration has listened to it and come up with a balanced solution to what the parents are asking for and what our teachers and staff also need.
Thank you, John. Any other comments? Yes, Alan?
Yes, my third year on the board, and what I liked about this year's calendar was there's a lot more open discussion. We talked about it ahead of time, and there was a PSYAC committee that Dr. Pickering headed up, and I attended that meeting, and so I applaud Dr. Benson that this is a step in the right direction, and it's going to be good for the parents and particularly our clients, who are the students.
Okay. Other comments? If not, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the superintendent's recommendation of the proposed 2015-16 school calendar and authorize the administration to submit a request for approval from the Department of Education for a continuation in an innovative school year for the 2015-16 school year. This is a voice vote. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay, thank you. Next is a public hearing regarding instructional time reporting in hours versus days for the 2015 and 16 school year. Laurel, did we receive any communications regarding this issue?
I did receive a communication from one of our news media outlets about whether or not this was the first time we had done instructional time as a, and explained to them this is something that we would do on an annual basis.
Okay, thank you. This is the time for a public hearing. Anyone wishing to address this board, please do so now. Seeing none, I will close out the public hearing. Thank you. Next is superintendent report.
The, right, we have to do a vote. The administration recommends that the 15-16 calendar be based on reporting hours.
Okay. Any conversation or discussion with the board? Seeing none, it is recommended the Board of Education approve the resolution for the Cedar Rapids Community School District to report instructional time and hours to the Iowa Department of Education for the 2015-16 school year. All those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same time, same sign, excuse me. Okay, that passes. Dave, this is your report.
Okay, thank you. I have several items tonight. First, we've started a new chapter at Grant Elementary School with the opening of the new library and computer lab. The renovation project converted an exterior courtyard that had largely been unused in recent years into a media center. The former school library has become a classroom. The project also included improvements to the ceiling, lighting, and air conditioning in the school cafeteria. The $750,000 project was funded by the School Infrastructure Local Option Tax, Silo, and was possible because, was possible because Silo-funded projects at Jefferson and Washington High School ended up lower than original projections. There are approximately 400 K5 students attending Grant that were certainly very excited when we had our ribbon cutting. We also flipped the switch on new exterior lights at Taylor Elementary School with a ribbon-cutting event last week. The new lighting will improve energy efficiency and provide better security coverage around the school and campus. It's important to note that Lowe's Corporation contributed $5,000 to the project. The remainder of the $8,500 total cost was funded through the physical plant and equipment levy, the PEPAL. Thanks to the Cedar Rapids Fire Department for promoting fire safety awareness with students through their annual fire prevention poster contest. Posters by seven student artists from the district were among the 10 winning designs. More than 20, excuse me, more than 2,000, 20,000 would be a lot of third graders. More than 2,000 third graders participated in the poster design effort, and you can see some of those designs. I'm pleased to let everyone know that a new exhibit at the Cedar Rapids History Museum celebrating several of our schools. And just a plug for the History Museum, it is a really a good jewel in Cedar Rapids. The Presidential Honor Education Legacy Exhibit at the History Center looks at the lives of 37 presidents for whom schools have been named throughout the history of our district. I encourage everybody to participate in that. Last, I want to congratulate Aaron Stucker, Kennedy High School Activities Director, for being named Fine Arts Administrator of the Year by the Iowa High School Speech Association. This honor recognizes the contribution and service given by the inductee to IHSSA and other arts activities in their high school. Congratulations, Aaron.
Yes, thank you, Dave. Board reports. Keith?
Report on the Iowa Association of School Boards. I have submitted to run for another three-year term, so the state convention, my name will be coming up hopefully. Also, I want to report on a recent meeting we had that the IASB has hired Director of Education for Finance Areas, which is a big, big job, and is a quality person that will be starting in that area. And then also, the association has a new employee handbook out, and a lot of districts, I think, have been notified, but just that that is there. And probably one of the really, really big things that's coming up is the school finance formula is going to be discussed this year, and there's a position paper that the Iowa Association has put together, and will be working very hard on that this year. It's been 40 years since that's been changed, so I, we all know how our schools have changed, but that has not been changed. And so there'll be a lot of effort this year, and probably a lot of you will be called upon to join in with that.
Thank you for running for the Iowa Association of School Boards. I know how much time all of us spend on our own work with our own districts, so to add that time, it's very much appreciated, Keith. And so if we're looking at school funding formula, is that something that the legislature asked to?
I believe that something has come up this year, that they have to act, and in past years, the action has been, "We'll just do what we did last time." And so we know how tax structures around the state have changed, populations of students have changed, and so we're trying to get a good platform together to present, and our lobbyists are working hard on it already.
Get that white paper, that would be outstanding, because this is a great opportunity.
I'll see to it that it happens.
Thank you. Gary, did you have anything?
Yes, just a reminder that our first chalk talk will be held this Saturday at the Edgewood Road Hy-Vee from 9:00 to 10:30 in the morning, and would encourage anyone in the, in the city that's interested about talking with several board members about education, what's going on in our community, to stop by and have a cup of coffee with us.
Okay, any other reports from any other board members? Okay, thank you. Now is communications, delegations, and petitions. I do have a request from Lawrence Winklowski. Just so you know, this is a, this is a comment period, this is not dialogue with the board?
Sure.
You have five minutes, so thank you.
Lawrence Winklowski, 4234 Merrell Road, Northeast. Beginning of school year, my daughter comes home from school the first day, and she goes, "Dad, you gotta get me a smartphone, because teachers in the middle of class said, 'Okay, people pull out your smartphones and look something up.'" And I said, "No, I'm not getting you a smartphone." It wasn't on the list. And the reason why I'm bringing this up is that I know what the policies are in the manual about smart devices, or, you know, phone usage and that, but are they something the students need or not? Because one of the things is, we were talking about equity a few weeks ago, and it costs around roughly $300 a month, or a year, to have a smartphone. And that, not every, the family in this district could probably afford it. If you have two or three kids in high school, and that, you're talking $600, $900, and that, and that, you know, could be a substantial part of a family's income. And that. The other thing is, if the kids don't have, or students don't have a smartphone, are they put at a disadvantage in the classroom over the students who do have a smartphone? I, you know, I'd like to think not. I'd like to think that there'd be possibly a way to have one or two tablets within every classroom or something where, when needed, they could be shared or something like that, but I don't know, and that. But it's just something I don't believe everyone need, every student needs them, you know, but, you know, it's a philosophical difference in that I don't believe most adults need them, and I'm happy not to have one, but, you know, so that's sort of my concern and question, and that, I don't know, you know, if someone can get back to me as to what the long-term plan is, or, it doesn't have to be a letter or that of, maybe someone from a high school, part of high school and middle school education could do that. I just like to know, maybe, maybe there's a long-term plan that I'm not aware of, so. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next is their consent agenda. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve in a second, please.
To move. Second.
Discussion? None at all? That's pretty good. This is a roll call action due to the personnel report.
Director Humblez?
Aye.
Director Laberty?
Aye.
Director Westercamp?
Aye.
Director Anhal?
Aye.
Director Witt?
Aye.
Director Rosenthal?
Aye.
President Meisterlin?
Aye, thank you. Now I'm going to turn this over to Val, who's going to introduce a guest for us this evening.
Yes, we actually have several members of the Zach Johnson Board here tonight, but I'm going to introduce Beth Malicki to come on up, and she's going to share a little bit about our agreement that we have with the Zach Johnson Foundation and the United Way of Central Iowa that provides our Kids on Course program. So thank you, Beth, for coming.
Thank you, Val, and thank you, board members, for passing the consent agenda because we were in that. So, I hope you meant to do that. My name is Beth Malicki, I live at 4325 Beaver Hollow Southeast in Cedar Rapids. I'm the program leader of Kids on Course, and this program is funded by the Zach Johnson Foundation. United Way of Central Iowa is the employer of record, and we work very closely with the district, but just to be clear, we don't give the district money, and the district does not give Kids on Course money, but we have a great relationship. This year, we expanded, we promise, into Grant Elementary, and the new library is spectacular, but now our program, so it serves three schools, Harrison, Van Buren, and Grant Elementary Schools. We have 11 full-time staff members working among those three schools. They provide mentoring, targeted academics from kindergarten through fifth grade, and they also do after-school enrichments, like extracurricular activities, as well as family engagement strategies. And as of today, we're providing after-school tutoring to more than 100 students, 97 of which qualify for free, reduced-price lunches. And we also, starting today, was our after-school enrichments, more than 300 kids signed up for this trimester. Yesterday was our annual Kids on Course family event at Bloomsbury Farm, and more than 350 kids and their parents were out there. It was a great time. And while we do a lot of things that sound fun and connect families in a positive way, we measure our success on the academic achievement of our students. For kids who ended the school year not on grade level, according to benchmarks that you all set, not I, in math and reading, over the summer is a critical time, where they can either shore up those skills, or they can fall even further behind. John Hopkins Sociology, John Hopkins Sociology Professor Carl Alexander found that 2/3 of the ninth-grade academic achievement gap between poor and wealthier students was due to summer experiences that were different for those two groups. 2/3 of the achievement gap based on socioeconomic status. That's why Kids on Course has offered for two years in a row a free academic summer program. We hire certified teachers, they're the experts, not us, when it comes to academics and learning. We have very small class sizes. We use proven academic methods, and we rely heavily on a woman named Amy Evans, who's actually one of yours, a Coolidge instructional design strategist who determined which curriculum would work best based on the needs of the students. We mix in fun. Iowa State University Extension brought out Bugs. We had therapy dogs to read to. Foster grandparents helped us out with math facts and with reading one-on-one to students. We had middle school volunteers from across your district. We also hired a counselor or nurse, and we had mental health support as well to round out what we did over those three weeks. And I'd like to share the results on the next slide that show, they're adorable, and then the next slide. Oh, one more, sorry, I'm skipping all over the place. There we go. So we focus on these three, these four things when it comes to reading, fluency, and accuracy. The next one is writing, which is separate from reading, which I did not know until Amy Evans taught me, and finally, math. The light blue bar is where the kids tested in our assessment week one, week, the next darker tealish bar is week six. This is the growth the students made in the six weeks they spent time with us in our free academic camp at Harrison last summer. We only invited kids who are not on grade level. We invited 189 students, 150 enrolled, 108 had very good, consistent attendance. We are very pleased with these numbers because we know that summer attendance is a real problem for programs, not just in Iowa, but across the country. The real test, though, isn't the assessment we do during our summer program, right? The real test is when those kids go back to school in the fall, how do they perform for your teachers? Unfortunately, we do not have Van Buren's numbers, but the next slide will share with you the slides, the information from Harrison. What we know is that 60% of Harrison students who went back to school this school year kept steady or grew their reading skills, according to Fonteson-Pennell. If you pull out specifically African-American students, the 13 of them at Harrison who attended our camp, 62% of them held their skill steady or grew them. So this is only showing you kids who attended our program, and we only invited kids who should have been flunked if we did that. They were not meeting benchmarks at the end of the previous year. Board members, you have more colorful handout. One of them has a whole bunch of lines on it, and that one breaks down that academic achievement by grade and goes into a little bit more detail around their attendance and our methods. It's a lot of words. I, Val helped me understand it all, so, and this just shows each grade how they moved. Next year, Kids on Course plans to expand to Roosevelt and Wilson Middle Schools, because the students that we've been with since they were second graders will be sixth graders next year. The Zach Johnson Foundation has announced a college scholarship program for those students who continue with us and maintain our standards. Will be rewarded with a college scholarship when they graduate from Jefferson. Students who have an academic need will most likely be eligible for a higher level of scholarship than those that don't have a proven, not academic need, financial need. Now, one element of support that Kids on Course frankly is not designed to fulfill, but we are because of an emergency situation, is around mental health. In the past, Kids on Course funded about $10,000 as a supplement to mental health. It allowed the therapist that was already coming to the school to provide group therapy, which, there was no funding for that, because you can't get reimbursed from Title 19 for group therapy. But as we know, because of the changes across the district due to financial realities beyond your control, all three of our schools were poised to not even get the level of mental health support they had last year, and while it was okay, it certainly was not meeting the social, emotional, behavioral needs of the students that we serve. We had $23,000 budgeted to go toward mental health this school year, that supplement, before the rug was pulled out from under us, and we recognized that that $23,000 was not even going to, it was not going to be enough to make the impact that we knew these kids needed, so we went back to Zach Johnson Foundation and asked them for an additional $50,000. So with that money, we put out an RFP, and we chose Tanager Place to provide one full-time therapist who will split her time among our three schools. The parents will have to sign a waiver for the child to get services, but the kids don't have to be Kids on Course kids, they don't have to go to our summer thing or do our after-school enrichment in order to get this service. The service will allow them to provide one-to-one therapy, which where they will bill a third-party provider if that's available, as well as group therapy, as well as take some of the tenants that Abby and Four Oaks has done through United Way Funding, that model of mental health support which we really value, that consultative model, there are pieces of that also in ours. But in reality, some of our families will not get those kids to the services that they need, so that's why ours also includes mental health services during the school day. We're very grateful that Zach Johnson Foundation stepped up and is allowing us to provide that service, but the reality is, it's interim, it's an emergency, it's just for this year. Kids on Course is not designed nor funded in a way that will allow us to keep filling this need as we grow, we simply cannot. And I heard some of you speak out on this topic from where you're sitting a couple weeks ago about how you understand how huge this issue is, so thank you for speaking out, and I would just ask that elevate your voice and let us help you. This is not your, this should not be on your shoulders, this should not be on our teacher's shoulders, this shouldn't be on any person in this room's, even, you know, the officer's shoulders around mental health. This is a community issue. So if you will please raise your voices and get more attention around serving the mental health needs of children, we will help you. Huge shout-out to Paul Hayes, Val Dolezal, Kim Rimmer, and Rhonda Shepherd for helping me understand the mental health situation and helping us build this temporary solution. Without them, I would just be standing here crying. Thank you.
Thank you very much. It actually is a state issue. It's a state issue, and the state's in trouble when it comes to figuring out this mental health, but thank you for pointing that out, it's huge. Questions or comments for Beth? Gary?
Just a follow-up, Beth. The UEN, the Urban Education League, we're a member of the large metro areas, are actually having a conference this week to bring people together to try to do some brainstorming, some thinking about what we can do to address. Again, it's not just a local issue, it's a state issue, and I think trying to craft some legislative goals and some things that we could address in funding, so. Can't express enough gratitude for the Zach Johnson Foundation for contributing additional money to, for the mental health issues and knowing that it is a problem, so thank you so much.
Other comments, questions?
I got one, it's the one in the room here. This program has grown, right? We talked about before, where's the limit? Is it every elementary, is it every school? I mean, where do we, where do you say this is our, we've maxed out? Because I really could see this being a wonderful stopgap for the summer months that we really don't have the resources to deal with ourselves, and this is a great program, but how do we do this where it doesn't seem to end?
We would love to be everywhere where there was need. We have had inquiries from outside, the Cedar Rapids Community School District, and our response is that, according to Zach Johnson, our focus is here first, and we want to figure out everything that we can, but we also don't feel proprietary about what we've learned. Our summer program is proven, it works really, really well, but it works for a lot of different reasons, and we have a packet that we share to anybody who wants to read it and copy it, make it their own, ask questions. You all will be, in a few years, I'm sure, as you very well know, under education reform, forced to develop some sort of summer reading program specifically for third-grade students who are going to be retained, and we have reached out to the state folks who are writing the guidelines and rules for that legislation. They hope to have that out later this summer, I understand, because we would like to remind them that we are here, and there are other groups like us, and if we could partner together to fulfill your unfunded mandate, so put some of the burden on us, we would like to help get you there. As far as what our limits are, I'm looking at Pat Cobb, the chairman of the board, it depends how much money he can raise. But, but we know that there, you know, we are, we are only at three elementary schools, and there are 19 elementary schools, and even schools that are not Title I. There are children there who could use academic, extracurricular, and frankly, positive family support. Some families don't feel comfortable in a school building, and that really is not the fault oftentimes of the staff that's in that building. It's the memories that the It's the memories that the parents have of their childhood. And we have some techniques that we didn't always make up ourselves. Sometimes we just read research on it and tried them out, and some of them have worked really well. Well, thank you.
Other comments? Gary?
You know, I think what you're doing, what Zach Johnson Foundation is, you're creating a model that could be replicated. You know, we get criticized, I think, a lot. We just throw money at a problem, and that's, you know, make it, you know, make it better. People don't want to just throw money. I think we can take the results that you're getting in the program and say, yes, it does take money, but with it we'll get results. And here is a model, a proven model, that will work, that will help us to be able to, as a district and as a state, as a community, to be able to expand the program. We can pay for it now, we can pay for it later. And I think everybody's looking for ways that are -- that will guarantee success, and you're showing us the way. Thank you.
If you hear of groups that have $25,000, you can do the summer program per school. It's $25,000 per school. We don't have the funds to do anything about that, but it can be done, and we would love to show people how. So, anybody who hears this.
And as you've pointed out, the district is examining our options, and we are somewhat waiting for the State Department to issue guidance on what the third-grade reading-approved interventions will be. And when we have that, I'm sure we'll be working with our partners, and we certainly appreciate the work. And the last thing I -- well, two things. One, this is data-driven, and I know as a board you've been asking me, as superintendent, to make reports on our activities in more data-driven manner. So, I really appreciate this report. Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
And finally, it's a great partnership, and we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Time tonight, and thank you for your time on Kids on Course. It's very much -- it's effective, it's appreciated. I work with a lot of families whose kids go to these schools, and they thank me all the time. And I want to say, Pat Cobb, Pat Baird, thank you on behalf of our district and on our board. We know that you've been with this program since its inception, and you drive it, and we really appreciate that. So, thank you very, very much, and thank you for coming on. You have to stay for the remainder of the meeting, though. You can't leave when your own item is over.
We've got three hours left.
So, we do --
We gave you $25,000 more.
So, we do have an agreement that we need to approve. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the ongoing agreement between the Cedar Rapids Community School District and the Zach Johnson Foundation and United Way of East Central Iowa for the Kids on Course program at Grant, Van Buren, and Harrison Elementary School Communities. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Thank you. Next, I'm going to turn this over to Trace. Thank you.
Good evening. I'd like to introduce Stephen Probert, who is the Teacher Leader Program Facilitor for our compensation system, and he's going to give you an update.
Thank you, Dr. Pickering. Thank you, Dr. Benson, and President Meisterling, members of the Board and members of the Cabinet, our guests. It is my pleasure to celebrate the current status of the teacher leadership system in the Cedar Rapids Community School District and its role in the promotion of student learning and development. Wanted to share with you some fast facts. Perhaps we could advance one slide. Go ahead to the next one. As you probably know, that this teacher leadership system is funded by the state of Iowa with a $5 million grant, and it was truly an honor to be awarded this grant. It was a very rigorous application process. Only 39 districts received this grant. And to brag on those who wrote it, which was not me, we got the highest score. So, I thought they did an excellent job. Another thing to consider here is that we have had excellent participation with 567 teacher leadership positions filled in 44 different roles. Now, it's impossible to capture all that's going on in those 567 roles, but our TV and video department has done an excellent job of capturing an overview of the impact of our teacher leadership system.
What is the teacher leader? The definition is really broad. A teacher leader can be someone who works at the central office to provide curriculum support. And a teacher leader can be mentor. A teacher leader could be the teacher next door who does excellent job at what they do.
The teacher leadership and compensation supplement will allow us in our district to support teachers so that they can improve and hone in on their exceptional skills that they have and become even better, so that in the long run, it will impact student achievement in a positive way.
Developing the leadership capacity of our teachers in the hopes of improving student achievement by improving instructional practices of our teachers, improving the art of teaching.
To me, the teacher leadership system is all about improving student learning and student achievement by taking really great teachers that we have in our district and putting them in a position in which they can influence other teachers.
So, in the teacher leadership system, the nice part about it is that we all are focused on the same thing. So, if you start at the building level, you have teachers who are doing what's best for kids and working in their classrooms, but then you also have teachers that step up just a little bit and make those decisions for the building as far as the BLT, Building Leadership Team, or the Positive Behavior Supports Team, and they're making those decisions at the building level. And then if you step up a little bit more, you get to those instructional design strategists who are in the building, and they are working on the coaching. And then if you step up a little bit more to the district level, then you have your facilitators who are leading the PD and the professional development of those instructional design strategists and the tech support people, working really well because it is helping us align our buildings and our district on one focus of what's best for the kids and how we can give them the best teacher and make them more effective.
We have our instructional strategists going into the classrooms, observing their teaching, sitting with them afterwards and co-planning their next steps, giving them additional resources, additional strategies to use with the students to help differentiate for those students, to make sure that all the students get exactly what they need.
We've never had these coaches at the middle school and high school level before, and you won't find a lot of models of this even anywhere in the United States because it's a relatively new practice for the secondary level, where it's been done in elementary for a long time. So, what we're really seeing is that teachers are very open to this, that they want to try new things, new resources. They want to increase student achievement, so they're very receptive to this, and they're very excited about having somebody come into their room and work with them one-on-one because it's geared towards them. It's personal.
So, our instructional design strategists, as they're now called, are going to be able to provide job embedded professional development to teachers every day.
Another thing that we've done is that we've put more boots on the ground in regards to our curriculum instruction work so that we have a guaranteed and viable curriculum throughout our district. I think that you're going to see that our curriculum and instruction work is going to be becoming more and more effective over time.
The thing that makes me the most excited is when I see teachers getting in the trenches and really working and focusing on what they can do in their classroom to make it better for students.
This grant allows us to tap into the expertise that teachers have.
We're taking teachers that have been identified as being great at what they do, and we've set up a system in which other teachers can go watch them do.
A teacher leader who has a strength in one area can now pair with someone who wants to improve in that area.
To me, that's really about cross-pollination, where you're taking these things that people are doing that are really exemplary, and you're making them known in other places.
Not a one-size-fits-all model, just like we do with our students. We're differentiating for the teachers so that they can grow in the area that they know they need to grow in, so that they can have a better impact on their teaching and instruction, and so then it can roll down to the students being able to get what they need.
We're finding that it has taken the professionalism to another level in our district.
Didn't they do a nice job?
Always do.
And in an attempt to make this excellent work known to the public, the teacher leadership system is found currently on our district website. And the link there, there's an article that describes basically the three levels of support that you're going to see within the teacher leadership system. It's going to have the intensive coaching piece. It's going to have the guaranteed and viable curriculum with requisite professional development and learning supports, as well as the building-based supports, and there's more detail there. The link at the bottom takes us to our teacher leadership webpage, where we communicate news and additional supports for our teachers and teacher leaders. Now, currently, we are introducing schools to support staff that is provided with this grant. So, Kathleen is right there. She is our professional development facilitator for school improvement, and so that's just getting her face out amongst the schools through our website. We also provide opportunities, barely see it at the top there, for people to share professional practice on Twitter, which I'm learning about myself. The third thing is, you'll notice off to the left -- upper-left-hand side, we have developed a quick method for teachers to observe and reflectively co-plan with model classroom teachers, that cross-pollination piece that you heard about before. So, I believe that there's much to celebrate in this inaugural year, and on behalf of the teacher leadership system, I want to thank the Board and Administration for your visionary support of this work. It's an honor to be in this capacity. The people I'm working with are remarkable. And it's also an honor to be with you this evening. So, along with the Superintendent's Cabinet, I would welcome any questions that you might have now or in the future.
Great. Comments or questions from the Board? Yes, Alan?
When might we hear the results of all this? Is there like milestones set up where we'll hear feedback and key indicators of how things are going?
We do -- one of the things that we are working on, and actually, we're flying out on Wednesday, go to Washington, DC, a number of us, Dr. Benson, Dr. Pickering, Val, Tanya, we're -- a number of others, we're going out to Washington, DC, because we received a grant from the NEA Foundation that's helping us develop a comprehensive way to evaluate this program. And so, at this point, we know what the state has said are important pieces, and -- but we are still learning how to make that system grow for our work, for a system that's 567 positions. So, that's what we're working on this first year.
Good.
Other questions?
In progress. Yes.
Questions or comments? Dave, did you have any comments?
Certainly. I want to commend our partner in this, CREA. They've been with us every step of the way, not only our local teachers, but their professional director, their UNISERV director. And I just want to say that of my 30 years post-President Reagan's report to the nation regarding entitled a nation at risk, this is really the first time I'm excited about an educational form -- reform that came out of the legislative and executive process. And so, I want to commend our legislators and our executive for funding this initiative. We put a lot into our application, and we're rewarded for that work. It's great work, and it holds real promise because intuitively, we know that if our teachers have better instructional practices, a better, more defined taught curricula, that we will have better outcomes for kids. And ultimately, Alan, that's our final objective in this whole process, and we're pleased to be able to participate in the NEA Foundation grant, and we'll spend a couple of days there learning.
Great report, Stephen. Thank you so much for joining us tonight, and thank you for your good work, and please share that with your colleagues.
I will. Thank you.
Okay. Annual appointments for Board members to Board committees, because I know all of us want to have more meetings with more people. So, thank you for stepping up. Lynn County Conference Board, Keith will remain on that board, and we appreciate that. Legislative Liaison will now be Gary Anhalt. Audit Committee will be Alan Witt. Diversity Committee will be Ann Rosenthal. Technology Advisory Committee will be John. Thank you all. Appreciate it. And thank you for those who have served on other committees in the past that are making a change. Next is, just want to remind you that you have your school building visitation schedule. If you have any questions or problems with that, give me or Laurel a call. And always, if you can't find time to make it this year, just send a note to the staff -- to the principal of that building, just to let them know because they're expecting to hear from us one way or the other. Next, I'm going to turn this over to Jill for a moment of silence for losing a staff member.
Thank you, Mary. I am sad to report the passing of our employee, Mary Myers, who served the district as a bus driver. She joined the Transportation Department in 1995 and provided outstanding service for 20 years to thousands of students. She last worked on October 3rd. She passed away on October 5th. She was a no-nonsense lady, but had a great sense of humor that allowed students to feel comfortable under her watch. She was willing to drive some of the more challenging routes and understood how to deal with a variety of behaviors. Her dedication and commitment to providing safe rides for nearly two decades will be missed. Our thoughts go to her five children, 15 grandchildren, and the rest of her family in this difficult time.
Thank you, Jill. Let's take a moment of silence for that family. Okay. Thoughts and prayers are with that family. Thank you for sharing information about her. And no further business. Before this Board, we stand adjourned.